Recording in progress.
Now you may start.
All right. Calling this public hearing to order at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, December 22nd, 2021. This meeting is being taken for transcription purposes only and the written minutes and attachments are found will serve as the official record of this meeting. Any board member who has a monetary interest or has a conflict, including expert communication, should disclose now, and I will now ask the secretary to call the roll.
Labrum?
Here.
Who?
Here.
Lesnar?
Here.
Mainzer has an excused absence. Bud?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
And Wollnie is in the audience. He is recused.
Yes.
Also trustee Kalina and trustee Augustine and zoning inspector Wilson are in the audience.
Okay. And if you would be kind enough to read the legal notice.
The Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals will hold two public hearings on Wednesday, December 22nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. The first hearing begins at 7:00 PM and the second follows consecutively at the administration building located at 1410 Ridge Road, which is on the southwest corner of the intersection of State Rock 3 and 303. Subject of the first hearing is as follows. An application for conditional use permit AP 0258 was submitted by applicant Tyler Rice, Fable Architects Inc. on behalf of Discount Drug Mart, potential buyer of property owned by Amel Wollnie Properties LLC of Center Road Property, Hinkley, Ohio. Permanent parcel number 01703C01001, 2736 Center Road. 01703C01002, 2714 Center Road. 01703C02001 and 01703C01013, 1423 West 130th Street. Requesting to construct a Discount Drug Mart retail store greater than 12,000 square feet at said property. Inspection of this property will take place on Saturday, December 18th, 2021 at approximately 10:00 AM. Zoning reference, Chapter 6 District Regulations, Subsection 6B, 3B, 1B, B-1C, Schedule of Permitted Uses of the Hinkley Township Zoning Regulations. Copies of these applications and other square material will be available for public viewing from the date of this notice to the date of hearing at the zoning department located in the administration building and 1410 Ridge Road, Monday at 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Tuesday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and Friday, 9:00 AM to noon. Information will also be found on the Hinkley website at www.hinkleytp.org under News and Events titled Board of Zoning Appeals Public Hearing. All interested parties are asked to attend this hearing or to send written comments to Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals, P.O. Box 344, Hinkley, Ohio, 44233. Log into www.hinkleytp.org for Zoom option to observe/listen only. Must be interested to speak/ participate in meeting.
Thank you. Notices have been sent to the appropriate property owners. The Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals acts within the authority of Section 519 of the Ohio Revised Code and exercises its powers as provided under Chapter 7 and 13 of the Hinkley Township Zoning Regulations. All public hearings are open to the public. All persons wishing to testify must do so from the podium, must identify themselves and give their residence address, and must be sworn in. Evidence and testimony must be pertinent to the hearing, and it is at my discretion to limit personal comments, personal attacks, opinions, and/or repetitious statements or testimony or evidence previously given. Disruptive persons will lose the right to remain at this hearing and personal attacks will not be tolerated. This is the first of two hearings upon the application of Tyler Rice of Fable Architects, Inc. on behalf of Discount Drug Mart, potential buyers of property owned by Amel Wollnie Properties LLC located at Center Road, Hinkley, Ohio, for a conditional use permit. The second hearing is also for a conditional use permit by the same applicant, although discussion of the second hearing for the conditional use permit may overlap with the first hearing, we will be voting on them separately, and the discussion and the vote will depend on the result of the first hearing. For the record, the township process in accepting an application for a conditional use permit is as follows. The entire completed application must be received by the 22nd day of the month in order to be placed on the public meeting agenda of the following month. The application is forwarded to the zoning commission for review prior to BZA public hearing. The BZA receives the application for review and study. Public notice is given in a newspaper of general circulation in the township for at least 10 days prior to the date of the public hearing. The published notices, notice states the place, time, and subject of hearing as was just read by the secretary. I understand that some folks may believe that this public hearing was snuck in during the holidays. This is not the case. Procedures were consistently followed as every other hearing, and this application was submitted on November 19th, 2021, which is within the deadline to be on this month's agenda for a public hearing. The applicant has submitted an application to this Board of Zoning Appeals and has also submitted certain documents included in your packet. Does everyone have that packet?
Yes.
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 Notice of application was properly given in local newspapers, and the application has been available for public review and comment. Have we received any phone calls, any emails, anything at all? I believe it should be no.
I'm not sure. Is this additional info?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you. No phone calls, emails, or no visits.
Okay. At this point, can you hold the board to see if everyone received the application and also conducted a site visit?
Labrum?
Yes and yes.
Yes and yes.
Lesnar?
Yes and yes.
Schaefer?
Yes and yes.
Bud?
Yes and yes.
All right. I note for the record that non-written communication made by known or unknown persons not under oath at a properly noticed hearing is not accepted by the Board of Appeals as testimony, and each member of the Board of Appeals has provided and provided a copy of this application and a copy of each of the other documents submitted. Written communications from persons not present this evening may include communications that are not made by affidavit. Because these communications are made by persons not under oath, they are not accepted by this board. I also note that written communication may include some writing by affidavit by persons that are not present this evening, and therefore cannot be subjected to cross-examination. These affidavits, therefore, will not be given much weight, if any, in the decision of the Board on this matter. This board does have the power to grant the request for a conditional use permit, and those people that do wish to speak must be, come to the podium and be sworn in. And at this point, I would like to call the applicant to the podium. Okay. If I could swear you in. I, please state your name.
I, Kristy Carter.
And your address also.
211 Commerce Drive, Medina, Ohio.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as issued answer on to back.
I do.
Thank you. So if you can just kind of give us-
I apologize, Madam Chairman. Can we check that microphone to see if it's on? She's a little quiet.
It's on according to trustee-
Can you hear me now?
I can. Thank you so much.
Sure.
You have to shout.
Okay. I'll try.
All right. Do you, if you can summarize your request and also if you have any additional information to provide other than what was submitted?
Okay. You're on.
Discount Drug Mart is interested in purchasing the property at the corner of 130th and 303. Our building is 28,500 square feet. I understand that we have to receive conditional approval for a building of such size. We do offer, you know, 50,000 items plus for retail purchases within our stores. We offer healthcare equipment and, you know, pharmacy services, the convenience of a drive-through or, you know, contactless pharmacy pickup. Discount Drug Mart is an Ohio-based company, and we are employee and family-owned, and we are primarily focused on servicing the more rural communities who may have, you know, less access to resources nearby. So Hinkley was definitely on our, top of our list of locations to pursue for future development.
So how was Hinkley chosen? Like what, I'm sure there's demographics and all that, but I mean, why that particular corner or why Hinkley as opposed to across the street?
Well, the area that is east of 71, this portion of 303, it's very difficult to achieve any sort of quick, you know, runs to get groceries or, you know, pharmacy, you know, care. So therefore, we felt that going east of 71, either north up and down 130th or along 303 was sort of a primary target for us, you know, that we have, you know, very limited, you know, retail in the Hinkley area. So we've always kind of had a file and, you know, keeping our options open for properties in the area.
Okay. So obviously you feel you're going to be serving a need that-
Absolutely. It probably takes, you know, most of the residents of Hinkley, I would think, at least 20 minutes to get to, you know, the CVS that's, you know, north near, I think it's, I forget what some-
Boston.
Corners area. And then, you know, to cross over into Brunswick. So it's just seems like a really good fit for us. It's definitely an area that we've always been interested, we even did discuss with, you know, all these whether they would, you know, consider parting with the land on that opposite corner, and that wasn't something that was going to pan out, but Mr. Wollnie, however, seems to be a great fit. Especially with the residential development going in behind where our proposed store would be located, there is a lot of senior community there too, so we'd be able to offer a lot of convenience for those residents.
Just one last question I have. The size that you're, the 28,500 square feet, is that a typical size, the largest, or?
That's our typical prototype size. Currently, as all new construction is being built at the 28,500 square foot building.
Okay. And it would be similar to, around the area, similar to-
Strongsville store, we just opened up on November 1st, and also we are in the process of finishing up our new store in North Ridgeville as well. Slated to open in the spring. Yes.
Same site plan layout?
The site plans vary based on the property itself, but the building is absolutely the same. Broadview Heights is another good example.
Okay.
Would it be the same as the one out on 18 and Medina County Road?
It should be. I personally was not involved in the build of that one, but I believe most of our stores prior to the last three years have been in the high 2700s to 28, now, I'm sorry, 27,800 to near 28,500.
That's a reasonably new store within the last few years.
I think that was maybe within about five years ago. I've been with the company briefly.
And based on the traffic you have, you feel that the parking is adequate to cover their needs?
136 spaces is, we try to design to be able to have between 120 and 130 parking spaces to be able to accommodate, you know, all of the customers that would be coming in. So 136 is really a great number.
This goes into the other hearing, but I might as well ask you at the same time, typically how many people do you have going through a drive-through at the same time? I mean, what would be an average and what would be the worst conditions?
Well, I'd say on average, it could be two to three. I've never personally seen more than two to three in a drive-through at the same time. If, we typically calculate how many prescriptions per day to determine how many drive-through lanes are necessary. So when we're building a new store in a new demographic, we always start off with one drive-through lane, and then should that store reach 400 to 500 prescriptions per day, then we would install the second drive-through lane. We install the drive-through canopy and we design the drive-lanes and the parking lot to be able to accommodate a second drive-through lane should the need arise.
Okay. Thank you.
So can you describe the flow of traffic as far as deliveries and how, you know, how that will be handled? I mean, it's shown in the plan, but I would, maybe if you can kind of verbalize it a little bit to help the virtual audience too?
Certainly. We expect most of the traffic for deliveries in our warehouse trucks specifically to come from 71, and they would go, you know, east on 303 and then take a, a right onto, I'm sorry, am I?
Yes, that's right. That's right.
Then I saw West 130th, and I thought, oh, wait a minute. So they would take a right onto 130th. I apologize. No, they're gonna, they're gonna go east on 303 and take a right into the driveway.
On Center, coming in from, from 303.
And then drive the perimeter of the building back into the dock and exit on 130th.
Okay.
And then take a left at the light to go, you know, back on 71, or if it's going to Drug Mart, they could end up, you know, going south throughout 303.
Okay.
And then I'd like her to explain the driveway that is on the west end and north. That's a right-hand turn only, correct?
The right in and right out?
Right.
Yes, that's a customer convenience curb cut that we had proposed, not allowing anyone to turn left at, you know, that location near the intersection, but they could turn right in and right out. It's a safety, but yet convenient access.
There is the large monument sign that you submitted a, is that the only sign?
Yes.
Okay. There is not going to be any enter or exit signs on 303 or West 130th, or is it just just the parking, the bells?
We typically do install eliminated enter and exit signs at our curb cuts. That would be submitted, you know, through a signage, submittable to the zoning department. We haven't ironed out those details.
Right, that's not, yeah, it's not for us. I was just trying to-
But it is difficult for us to propose that, shouldn't be accepted.
Okay.
Now, this one sign, is that going to be north-south, east-west, or at an angle at the corner, or?
Again, it's still something that is to be further designed, but right now it looks like it's more, you know, east-west.
Is the sign, I mean, there was a, did everybody get the landscape planned?
Yes, yes.
Is the sign part of the landscape?
Yes.
Is it going to be landscaped as far down, yeah, I see it here.
We typically will plant lilies and, like, daylilies around the monument sign.
Yeah, and here it shows that north-south.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
The faces are going to be east and west.
Yes.
But the sign's going to be north-south.
Okay. I understand your interpretation, yes. You're correct.
The only other question I have is, the, the location of this one, how will that affect the location of the, what's the nearest Drug Mart to here? Would it be in Brunswick?
Brunswick, probably Pearl Road. We don't feel that it's going to have any effect because the distance to get to that Drug Mart, it's probably unlikely that there are people from Hinkley going that far. There's a lot more convenience to be obtained this direction, you know, as opposed to driving all the way down Pearl Road. That's even a farther drive. I think it's about six miles away, but it takes quite a while to get there from this store.
Yeah, traffic-wise.
Traffic-wise, those lights are just, wow, in Brunswick, it's very difficult to get through.
The one on the downed line road, would that be closer than the Brunswick one?
Well, I'd say definitely Brunswick is closer.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because we go to the Brunswick one.
We go to the Brunswick one too, and we also go to the one on 18 if we're going into Akron.
Anybody have anything else?
No.
Anyone in the audience? Okay. Before we decide to take a vote, we should probably talk about any sort of conditions. Anyone have any suggestions about anything? Do you want to do a motion and maybe do a motion and just include these conditions?
Yeah.
Let's just leave these conditions for, obviously, if you have any, if you don't have anything else to contribute, can sit.
Can we ask any questions on the drive-through right now during this part of it?
I think we should do that separately.
Okay.
I mean, it's a separate hearing.
Okay.
Okay. She's sworn in, she'll come back up.
Actually, I wanted to talk to Tom.
Tom, do you have anything to contribute?
Oh, well, no, I, the government's done a nice job of giving us information as far as, like, our landscaping you just mentioned and so forth, and I don't see any conditions that need to be added to the site plan. And the only thing I would mention is, as Kristy mentioned, we're going to have a senior housing to the east of this. Make sure the lighting on the parking lots and so forth is shining into Drug Mart and not out to the senior housing. It's been suggested that they might want to consider, I don't know if you can make this a condition, but it, but it's suggested that maybe there be some walking paths or even a driveway to get in from the senior housing to the Drug Mart to cut down traffic on Center Road and West 130th. But I'm not sure that needs to be a form of condition.
Yeah, I think-
Because it hasn't been talked about.
It's, you'd also have to talk to that property owner.
Right, would that be an agreement between Drug Mart and, and-
And I think-
Pride One, I guess?
Spoke to Kristy about that, and she said that she was going to contact Pride One.
Right, that would be an agreement between, between them. Because there's going to be landscaping, and actually, isn't the detention facing over there too on that side?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's something, I don't know that we need to put a condition on that, but yeah, no, that's, I mean, it's a good idea.
It's not part of ours, but it'd be only like one spot they could even do anything like that.
Right.
Based on the Pride One.
Right. Right. No, the only conditions is, I think that, you know, obviously there are the obvious ones that, that the, the project should be, will be in substantial conformance with the current plans that are submitted this evening. Same thing with the landscaping, as approved by the zoning commission, and then when we make the motion, you can read these into it. There is one ground sign in the entrance meeting the requirements of the zoning code, and then also this conditional use permit would only be granted to Drug Mart and Drug Mart only, and cannot be transferred without approval of the BZA. Those are the only conditions that I can, if everybody can-
Right, it meets everything else.
So at this point, can we have a motion?
All right, I make an application motion for a conditional use permit, AP 0258, submitted by the applicant Tyler Rice, Fable Architects, Incorporated, on behalf of Discount Drug Mart, potential buyers of properties owned by Amel Wollnie Properties LLC of Center Road Property, Hinkley, Ohio. Permanent parcel 01703C01001, 2736 Center Road. Permanent parcel 0103C01002, 2714 Center Road. Permanent parcel 01703C02001 and 01703C01013, 1423 West 130th Street. Requesting to construct a Discount Drug Mart retail store greater than 12,000 square feet at the said property. Zoning references, Chapter 6 District Regulations, Subsection 6B dot 3 dot B dot 1B with a conditional zoning permit, Schedule of permitted uses, Hinkley Township Zoning Regulations. So I can put the conditions in that we spoke to. The project shall be substantial conformance with the current plan submitted this evening, December 22nd, 2021, to the BZA as part of the application for approval of a conditional use permit. All landscaping shall be in general accordance to the plan submitted this evening, December 22nd, 2021, and shall conform to a detailed landscaping plan as approved by the Hinkley Zoning Commission as part of the final site plan approval. One ground sign per entrance meeting requirements of the Hinkley Zoning Code 10 dot 3 dot E dot 1. This conditional use permit for construction of the Discount Drug Mart is issued to Fable Architectures, Incorporated, on behalf of Discount Drug Mart only. The conditional use permit may not be transferred to any other entity without approval of the Hinkley Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
On this date. All right. Any person adversely affected by a decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals may appeal to the Court of Common Pleas of Medina County on the grounds that such decision was unreasonable or unlawful, and they have 30 days from the date of this meeting to appeal. And if I can explain the vote, a yes, simple majority with a quorum is in favor of the applicant, a no, simple majority, or a tie vote denies the applicant's request. So at this point, you can call and take a vote.
Labrum?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Lesnar?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Bud?
Yes.
All right, so the conditional use permit has been granted, and the applicant has one year from the date of this hearing to begin construction or to act upon the approved request. Again, anyone adversely affected by this decision has 30 days from the date in which the minutes of this hearing are generalized to file suit. All right, and if we could just take a quick break before we start the second, do you have the decision form? Thank you. I'm going to put the attached list for conditions.
Okay. Same conditions, we'll go in number two also.
Pretty much. Yeah, I think so. Yeah, we'll just make a copy of that. Okay, I'll get them to sign it. Okay, let me get them to sign it. Make sure that's the first one, Judy. Yeah, it is, it is, AP two five eight, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, we ready to go? Right. I'm sorry. Um.
No, they're part of.
No. All right. Okay, this is the second of two hearings upon the application of Tyler Rice of Faber Architecture, Inc. On behalf of Drug Mart, uh Discount Drug Mart, potential buyers of property owned by Amel Womly Property LLC located at Center Road, Hinckley, Ohio for a conditional use permit. And I will now ask the secretary to read the legal notice, just read the uh number two.
Okay, subject of the second hearing is as follows. An application for conditional use permit AP zero two five nine was submitted by applicant Tyler Rice Fable Architecture, Inc. on behalf of Discount Drug Mart, potential buyers of property owned by Amel Womly Properties LLC of Center Road Property, Hinckley, Ohio. Permanent parcel number zero one seven zero three C zero one zero zero one twenty seven thirty six Center Road. Zero one seven zero three C zero one zero zero two twenty seven fourteen Center Road. Zero one seven zero three C zero two zero zero one and zero one seven zero three C zero one zero one three fourteen twenty three West Hundred and Thirty Street. Requesting a drive through for a proposed Discount Drug Mart retail store at said property. Inspection of this property will take place on Saturday, December eighteen, twenty twenty one at approximately ten o'clock AM. Zoning reference, chapter six, district regulations subsection six B three B five, B D H one C schedule of permitted uses of the Hinckley Township zoning regulations.
Thank you. Uh, the applicant has submitted an application to this Board of Zoning Appeals and also uh certain documents included in your package and pertaining to this application for a conditional zoning certificate. Notice of application was properly given in local newspapers and the application has been available for public review and comment. Do we have any phone calls, any emails, anything pertaining to the second?
No phone calls, emails or no resident visits to the office. There was letters correspondence, Discount Drug Mart rendering December eighth, twenty twenty one, landscape plan December seventeenth, twenty twenty one, and Discount Drug Mart signage December twentieth, twenty twenty one.
Thank you. Um, each member has been provided a copy of the application and also conducted a site visit and if you could pull the board that that is the case.
Labro?
Yes, yes.
Who?
Yes, yes.
Lesnar?
Yes and yes.
Shaffer?
Yes, yes.
Bud?
Yes to both.
All right, at this point, if I could ask the applicant to step up to the podium again. And since uh since you were already sworn in, you're continue to be sworn in. If you could uh give us a summary and what the request is for this uh conditional use permit?
For the the drive through for the Discount Drug Mart stores, it is a contactless touch point for our customers to be able to uh conveniently and quickly come through and pick up their prescriptions if they don't choose to want to go into the store um and do any, you know, shopping or being exposed to anyone else, you know, in the community at this point. Um, we, as I mentioned before, we do design our drive throughs um as a single lane to start with, with a window access and, you know, a face to face, you know, interaction with your pharmacy staff. Um, should the need arise where we reach four hundred to five hundred uh prescriptions a day or any you know, stacking becomes a situation at the store, we will be able to easily expand into a second lane drive through with a tube system and the uh the video capability so that you still have that personal interaction with your pharmacy team.
And on the newer stores, do they have about the same setup with the three car waiting? Are the ones that you've built in the area?
Exactly the same.
Exactly the same.
Exactly the same.
Now, you mentioned that, you know, if you see a a large volume, have you seen that where you've had to add on?
We, we do, we, I've had in Montville, our Montville store, we added a second lane. Um, that's actually my store that I shop at, so that's the only location I've seen more than two cars in in lines when I said three. And usually I pick up my prescriptions at the first of the month, which is typically, you know, where most people do. Um, that's the only time I ever saw three there, but that store had over five hundred prescriptions per day and we were able to get a second lane put in there to, you know, ease the flow of traffic.
Yeah, I was just wondering because if it did get larger, would that mess up the parking spaces here? I mean, anything, anybody coming in after those three is either gonna have to be in that a little uh drive through lane or in front of the parking spots.
Actually, the striping that you see, that is where the lane would be. That's why we have that striped there is so no one confuses that for parking and it's kind of reserved so that we could expand the drive through in the future if we need to and we wouldn't have, it wouldn't be interfering with any drivelines or parking.
Yeah, that would be my only concern, that if it starts running out, you'd be blocking people in parking spots.
No, that's a twenty four.
I understand that, I'm talking about the way it is presently. Not with, not before you add a second lane. Right now, if you had a more than three, they're gonna be out into the parking area.
Oh, I see.
You're gonna be out into the uh, you're gonna be out into the lanes.
I understand your, your concern, um. The, we typically install directional signage throughout the parking lot as well directing customers on how to best access.
Can you describe the flow of traffic go to go to to drive through?
So.
So you would be coming in from where to and then what, make a left to right?
Sure, you can come in from the, you know, the ride in on Hundred and Thirty, so if we're, we're looking you know, towards the front of the store, you can drive either the back row and take that. So, between the two islands, that's directly across from your entrance to the drive through. That's your cut through from the back row.
Mm-hmm.
And then if you're coming in from, yes, if you're coming from either of the entrances on Hundred and Thirty, you can access from that back side and we would direct you as such with signage throughout the parking lot, drive through this way with arrows. We're, we're pretty, you know, intricate about providing those directional signs, especially when we have you know, elderly coming, we wanna make sure they understand where to go, it's clearly visible and um I don't anticipate that starting off, we're gonna have any traffic issues with the stacking. But it is something that we will, you know, monitor and we are very close with our pharmacy staff, they will always let us know if they're seeing any complications and we jump you know, right on it to make any improvements that are necessary.
So the bottom line, other than Montville for a short period of time or whatever period of time it was, you're not seeing any problems at any, any of the other stores?
No, um, like I said, I've been at the at Drug Mart for about three years and since I've been there, we have installed it's not really part of my department, so I don't necessarily always know, um, our operations group also will contract adding second lane drive throughs. I've been involved in two, I think Chestnut Commons was one over in the Alaria area. And that was right when I first started. And I believe that there have been a couple others, I just, I personally wasn't involved in that, but our our officers and our pharmacy supervisors who oversee, you know, the entire uh chain, they're always monitoring these things and always you know, approve the need once we hit those marks before we run into any traffic issues in the parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So the way.
I have a question about this. Our uh, our zoning code says uh nine point seven A three says that waiting spaces uh for any drive through window should be not less than six spaces. So, my question is, Christie, is, is what we're showing on this, will that hold six cars? Or do we need to consider the larger drive through to satisfy our, our code right now?
Our current design will only stack four cars.
Mm-hmm.
There's not any way in this current design to allow for six. May I ask, is this code based on drive through food service? Is there any specification for the type of drive through?
There, there's really not, and that's a fair question. Uh, you know, it's just a paragraph in our code that says waiting uh spaces but not less than six spaces per window. But you're absolutely right, it could be McDonald's or something.
We ran into this uh situation and with our zoning uh board in Montville as well. And there is a huge, there's a McDonald's across the street from us and we were being originally held to their standards, but being that we are a drive through pharmacy, not a drive through food service, our traffic is not nearly what you would get at a you know, drive through for food service, you know, establishment, so we were able to get a variance on that. Of course, that's going to be to your discretion um when we get.
Well, that was a question I was, I was gonna ask Tom because I got that open right here. Where ten spaces or six spaces if you got a double drive through. And uh that's something we, it's in the code.
Would it be an issue to do a double drive through initially?
It, I, I'd have to discuss that with my, my superiors to uh confirm that that would be something we would willing to do, do the, the expense and the equipment and all of that, it could be a bit costly. But it's not something I can say that they won't consider.
How long after was the Montville uh second, you know, drive through added?
You know, the opening?
Three years afterwards.
Okay.
Typically, when a store opens up.
I need to have you up here if you're gonna speak, you can just, you can, I mean, join.
I just have a couple things.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Steve spoke the company longer than I.
Sure, if you could uh please uh state your name and address.
Uh, hi, Steve Ferris, uh two eleven Commerce Drive, Madonna, four four two five six.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, as you show answer into that.
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, a couple, maybe a little context, so typically when a store opens up, the pharmacy business is at sort of zero. So it takes a number of years to ramp up or to sort of get to that pharmacy level where as Christie said, when we get to the four hundred or five hundred scripts a day, that would dictate a second lane. So know that at least initially, there's gonna be a little startup or ramp up before we even see that level. And then also, I would just serve for more context, we want to get folks through that line as fast as we can. Um, so typically, you will not see more than two to three cars at a time, circumstance maybe five people travel one time. I understand that, but know that we're doing everything on the inside to move that line along.
See, my, my only concern is that, like Tom brought up, it is in the book. There's.
So what do we do about that? I mean, we would have to, they would have to get a variance.
I believe they would.
For that. So we would.
Unless, unless you can uh, you know, extend a canopy uh as part of the condition tonight so that you have two lanes, I mean.
Right.
I think we're back for a variance.
Now, that's not gonna work either because it's six spaces on double lanes. It's ten spaces but not less than six spaces per window or stall when there are two or more windows. So I mean, if that wasn't in here, like I could see where you're not gonna have that traffic, but unfortunately. Unfortunately, it is in there.
No, that's something. Do they have, do they have any spare parking spots as far as what they're required to have for the square footage and such?
Oh, yeah, there, there, there are.
Well, I, I mean, do they have ones that they could get rid of?
So they would reconfigure that parking, that, what is that landscaping right there, that little?
Yeah, because what I was gonna say, if you could get rid of some of these spots just to the north of that and have them come in there, you could probably easily get six cars in there.
So, where that uh, where, where the drive through is right now, there's that little triangle sort of spot which is where the landscaping is.
Right.
So if that, if, if some of those parking spaces could be gotten rid of and just kind of that's a way to avoid the getting a variance for this. That would have to be reconfigured. Does everybody see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, number eight, it's called a radius or access drive radius. If that was shaved off, it would be perfect.
So are typically in that area, we have ten plus parking spaces. And I, I understand your, your idea to remove some parking spaces to expand the stacking, but then that puts cars crossing over closer to our entrance, which puts customers.
Cause that's the main entrance over there.
You know, from crossing the parking lot to the entrance, so this is kind of our comfort zone with allowing traffic to cross and access the drive through without creating a dangerous situation for customers trying to.
I understand the logic there, yeah.
I just think the way it's written here, the, the variance is that it, we have to have a.
It is in our zoning code, so we would have to deal with it, you know, I mean, the only, the only other way to deal with it is if we would uh we would uh move on with a vote on the drive through. We would have to do a contingent on getting a variance based on our code. And you'd have to come back for a variance just on that. Okay. I mean, unless you can change the plan here.
I honestly don't, I've never seen a plan where we could accommodate five cars stacking in one lane. If it comes down to needing a second lane to add more cars, it would still be four cars per lane just because of the orientation of our building. And this is the longest side of our building, you know, so that's where we have our our drive through, the pharmacy is in the back corner. There really isn't anywhere else that I can move it to that would.
But definitely, you definitely, definitely see what, you definitely see where you're coming from.
Four cars per lane.
Yeah, there's no doubt about that.
Offer and whether you, you're, you, you know, deem that we need two lanes, that'll be up to the board. Um, or one lane with four.
Well, whether it's one or two lanes, either way, based on the way we have our code written, which maybe Dave, you could, can you read that? Or can you give it to me?
Pardon?
The way our code is, can you read it, man?
Read, do your code, oh, read the regulation.
Somebody just read it out loud.
But ten waiting spaces but not less than six spaces per window or stall when there are two or more windows or stalls. And that's facilities with service windows or service entrances such as banks, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, drugstores aren't in there per se, but it's facilities such as that. But it is written in here, so we do have to address it.
So, right, so the way our code is, either way, even if you agree to do two days, you still have to get a variance based on.
Yes, I'm fine with applying for another variance due to the stacking, absolutely.
You know, whether you wanna come back, the variance doing two or one, whatever, but okay, that's what it's gonna have to be.
We'll probably propose one at first and, and clear off any further comments that you may have, but we would definitely like to apply for that variance.
Okay.
All right, um, anybody, anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. So we'll have to uh try to um do a motion, where's the uh, the sheet that had the conditions? Okay. So maybe what we do is add anyone have suggestions how we're going to? anyone have suggestions how we're going to word this?
Well, I think you could word it just the way you would normally, if we're not gonna have a change, and then at the very end, put down that this is contingent upon the fact that they, it is either redesigned to fit the zoning code or they apply for and are granted a variance.
That sounds good.
Um, and cycle the zoning code.
What, you mean like nine point seven?
Right.
Nine point seven A three. Nine point seven A dot three.
All right, a contingent on a site plan that conforms or changes made to conform to nine point seven A three or a variance for nine point seven A three is granted.
Okay. And finally, Dave.
That sounds good.
All right, um, again, any person adversely affected by a decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals may appeal to the Court of Common Pleas of Madonna County on the grounds that such decision was unreasonable or unlawful, and they have thirty days from the date of this meeting to appeal. Um, so at this point, can you read, uh, the motion?
I make a motion for an application for conditional use permit AP zero two five nine submitted by Tyler Rice, Fable Architecture, Incorporated, on behalf of Discount Drug Mart, potential buyers of property owned by Amel Wominy Properties LLC of Center Road Property, Inkley, Ohio. Permanent parcel zero one seven zero three C zero one zero zero one at twenty seven thirty six Center Road. Permanent parcel zero one seven zero three C zero one zero zero two at twenty seven fourteen Center Road. And permanent parcel zero one seven zero three C zero two zero zero one and permanent parcel zero one seven zero three C zero one zero one three located at fourteen twenty three West Hundred Thirty, Thirty Street. Requesting a drive-through for proposed Discount Drug Mart retail store at said property. Zoning reference, Chapter Six District Regulations subsection six B dot three dot five B one with a conditional zoning permit. Schedule of permitted uses of the Hinckley Township zoning regulations. With the condition added that it'll be contingent on the site plan to conform or changes made to zoning, uh, reference nine point seven A three or a variance for nine point seven A three is granted.
Okay, and then. All right. Okay, uh.
Second.
Second, that's Dave. All right, a yes simple majority with a quorum president is in favor of the applicant, and no simple majority or a tie vote denies the applicant's request. And at this point, let us take a vote.
LaBrow?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Lesnar?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Bud?
Yes.
All right, so your conditional use permit for the drive-through has also been granted with those conditions, and the applicant has a year from the date of this hearing to begin construction or to act upon your approved request. Again, anyone adversely affected by this decision has thirty days from the date in which the minutes of this hearing are journalized to file suit. And, uh, at this point, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Fill in both, and we are adjourned at seven fifty-five.
See, I can fill in for two.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.